Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I say good morning and then click. Let me try this again. This meeting will start. Thank you, everyone, for coming today for a work session. I will call this meeting to order. Public comments? Do we have public comment? Quote?
Yes, ma'am. We have three individuals.
We have three individuals who have signed up this morning. And the first person we have is Mr. John Tomasky. Listen, Tomasky, come forward. We ask that your comments be limited to your discussion and not geared toward elected officials or anyone else in this meeting. So I'm not sure what your... Oh, you have roads this morning. Is that what you're going to talk about?
Good morning, everyone. John Tomasky, 29th and 30th Road, Rhode Island. First, I wish to thank the four district commissioners and the chairman for the kind letter addressed to my son. He's unable to be here today as he's occupied with official business today and tomorrow. So I am thanking you on his behalf. On the subject of roads, I was at the first session on the adjustments to overpasses that was held at Mason Creek School. And I have three reactions to that. First is that there should be appropriate legislation, federal, state, or county as appropriate, that governs the operation of vehicles on the public highways, length, width, height, weight, that sort of thing. Secondly, law enforcement at state or county level should be cognizant of these regulations and enforce them. Third, while I was at the Mason Creek event, there was no formal presentation. In answer to a question by another resident, the G-DOT employee said that the genesis of all of this was that a tall rig had been unable to pass under an overpass in South Georgia, doing considerable damage to the overpass. So that they were now proposing to jack up several overpasses in West Georgia. I then asked whether the cost of that was going to be borne by the trucking industry or the general public. Of course, it's going to be on the backs of the general public. At that point, I left the meeting, and as always, leaving us or Mr. Lennon coming in. Possibly, he got that same information, possibly not, depending where you were and who you asked. In any event, it is not the responsibility of the general public to pass legislation or to enforce it. So the parties responsible for those things need to do a better job. Rather than go through all of this expansive construction, which is going to greatly delay and inconvenience people, the G-DOT person estimated it would be like forty, forty-five days per overpass. Whether doing concurrently or not, I don't know. But that's quite a lot of time. And this is not the sort of priority as I-85 collapsing in Buckhead. This is a few overpasses out in West Georgia. So this is going to be an enormous inconvenience, and I think it's unnecessary. First of all, if your rig is too tall to go under, you don't belong on the road. Secondly, you can get off, go up the ramp, across the road, down the next ramp, back onto the highway. And finally, for safety reasons, rather than reconstruct the overpass, you can build a barrier through which traffic must pass, and you have it at the same height as that overpass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasky. Okay. Next, we have Ms. Don Ray Leonard. Thank you so much. I believe your subject matter was one of these buses.
Yes, ma'am.
You state your name and your address, please.
Good morning. My name is Don Ray Leonard, Creekside Manor subdivision in District Two. In Douglas County, we are diverse in our ages, races, genders, neighborhoods, and economics. But in all aspects of this bus project, there is a prevailing theme that cuts across all lines in this county. That theme is simply no buses. Clearly, the arguments against the proposed bus system are many. Let me recap a few of them. There was no feasibility study conducted. If you have done it, we would love to see it. There was a 2016 needs-wants-based study that you have paraded as a feasibility study with fourteen hundred participants. That equals approximately one percent of the county. City of Douglasville was not consulted, much less involved in the planning, but will be responsible for costs to support this bus system. In addition, the city of Douglasville did not give their approval for the buses, and even though Douglas County Board of Commissioners said they did in the CMAC application, was this fraudulent information submitted on a federal application to secure a grant? Show the public where the city signed off on that. The BOC did not vote for the four-route system. You can dance around this one all you like. It was unlawful, non-transparent, and the Transportation Committee and the Transportation Department are responsible for this ruse, and the board allowed it to happen. There was no cost analysis conducted. No one in this room can tell us how much this bus system is going to cost. Even Gary Watson said we did not know until after we received the CMAC grant. I expect to know the cost before I make a decision to buy in. What will the financial impact of this bus system be on the taxpayers? The Change.org petition for no buses as of today has generated four thousand five hundred and twelve signatures. Douglas County Sentinel survey has, excuse me, five hundred and five participants to date, eighty-nine point four percent voting no. Survey of people attending Commissioner Mitchell's coffee and conversation this weekend, over ninety peoples, over ninety percent of the room opposed, the BOC accepting the CMAC grant. You have a duty and obligation to the citizens of this county to uphold the rule of law when conducting county business. Policy and procedure have not been followed. You know it, and we know it. We've asked you to retract the CMAC application. You refuse. Again, we implore you to vote no on the CMAC grant. We can only pray that this board does the right thing in the end. Chairwoman Jones, this baby does indeed belong to you now. You inherited this project from the previous administration, and you have done your research, but your research is flawed. This project is dead on arrival for the citizens of this county. Listen to the people. They are saying no to this bus proposal and no to this CMAC grant. That's it. That's it. That's over.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Leonard, we will take your concern and advisement. Last but not least, Mr. Pierce. Mr. Pierce, if you could state your name and just...
Last but not least. Boy, I like those words. Larry Pierce, 4120 Vincent Road, Douglasville, Georgia. I was up at four o'clock this morning taking my notes. I got them right here. Now, what they basically pertain to is Mr. Bussey on the fourteenth. Now, Mr. Bussey is supposed to be the spokesperson for the coroner, right? He was hired. Now, the first thing I want to clear up, because during my lawsuit, I did a lot of investigation, and it was dismissed, and that's fine and dandy. But the truth of the matter is, when he said the cooler, cooler, many more, whatever you want to call it, where bodies go, it's going to save the county money. Let me tell you something. That's about like saying, I'm going to have some more children, so it's going to save me some money. Don't fly. First statement he made is he said, there's a charge from the other funeral homes. No, 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 no. None. I've talked at length with Mr. Andrews over at Hightower. There has never been a charge. It's always been complimentary, okay? Never been a charge. All of them have coolers, except Willie Watkins. They don't have a cooler. Now, the other thing he spoke about is that we've got a cooler. Okay, we've got one. And he invited some of you to come down. So I went over there, and I looked at it, and he said, I can't see inside of it because there's a body in it. I said, okay, I just want to see outside. So I had someone with me to make sure that I wasn't going to get assassinated by anybody. So I had a man with me about the size of a share of pounds. After that little viewing, I had to pick up some papers, and I went over to the fire Unplanned, he came out and talked to me. I said, Chief, you heard Mr. Bussey say we got a cooler?
Yeah.
I said, you know where it is?
No.
I said, where do you think it is? He says, I don't know. He never said where it was at. Well, it's underneath the old courthouse, behind those two metal doors, right? That's where it's at. It's actually directly under the break room. When you pull the Coke machine out and you take a drink of Coke, they're right under there.
All right.
All kind of problems with the cooler, but I'm not getting into that, okay? That's for another day. But I'm going to tell you something. And Madam Chair, I ask that you let me go into this to some degree, because you're never going to hear it again. And that is, this poet wrote something that pertains to everyone who's ever done things. And that is, oh, what a tangled web we weave when we practice to deceive. Now, you know, some people don't know what they're doing. Some people think they know what they're doing. And it's y'all's job to know what you're doing. Mr. Mitchell, you've been in marketing. You know how to analyze things. And others have been around a long time. We're eighteen months into the practice, which is one-third, okay? One-third. And one-third of the time, if you haven't figured out what's going on, then you just need to leave. Now, what's going on is the practice that when they bring bodies now, he said, they're going to save the county money? Ha! You ought to see what I got here. I got charges to the county, to the county coroner. Cooler. Yep, there's still charges on the hundred dollars, okay? Right here. Now, I want to jump over the road for just one minute. This is going to finish it up.
Okay. You have four minutes.
I went over to see...
You have one minute, one second.
I went over to see the cooler again. And while I was there, Mr. Rogers said, I don't have a key. I said, oh, so he called coroner. And the coroner said, Mr. Pierce has already seen the cooler. He doesn't need to be around there no more. Well, let me tell you what's going on.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes, ma'am.
You have almost five minutes.
Let me just finish this one sentence, please.
Mr. Pierce, you're finished.
Okay.
Thank you. You can't... Mr. Pierce, I've given you almost five minutes to do this, so you're finished. Please, just wrap it up with your last sentence. I'll allow you to wrap up your last sentence.
Can I say, finish it?
Yes. Finish your last sentence.
Mr. Axel earned in the last pay period five thousand four hundred dollars, and Mr. Rogers earned one thousand one hundred and forty. The locks were changed in the doors. Mr. Rogers can't get in, okay? So he can't do his job. Now, it's up to y'all to figure out what the heck's going on, okay? And I use the word heck lightly. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pierce, we'll take this matter under advisement.
Boy, I wish you would.
I am. I'm going to give a presentation in a second so that I could read what's your concern.
Because I'll tell you what. Just off the radio.
The next presentation is from the coroner's, but she's not here yet. So what I want to do is move forward with the presentation that I have so we can move forward. So, do we put that on for me? So we get started. She should be here hopefully in a second. Did you have an opportunity to speak with her? She didn't call back. Okay.
Where's the coroner?
Could you give, if you could, like commissioners?
I didn't hear what you said.
You said you wish we would take it under advisement. I saw you give me the ticket under advisement. While they are working the board, I would just like to say again, good morning, Board of Commissioners and citizens of Douglas County. It is my fiduciary responsibility to separate emotions from responsibility, responsibilities. And I said, leaders don't react, they research. After many hours of comparing bookkeeping and recording, record-keeping practices of the current and previous coroner, I am prepared to render my findings. Commissioner Geiter, I can't agree with you more that coroners should conduct a sign-off investigation, particularly if they are at the scene, rather than paying a deputy coroner a hundred and seventy-five dollar fee. Being that coroner Renee Garland is a part-time salaried elected official, you and I know that it is impossible for her to conduct all death investigations in the county because death occurs around a full-time clock. Without a doubt, the number of investigations or death investigations invoices per one hundred seventy-five dollars processed for deputy coroners in the finance department was higher in 2017 than 2016. Death investigations conducted by the coroner has no budget impact, and the finance department does not receive an invoice and the number, and that's by the coroner. Now, the coroner, because remember, all the death investigations and the invoices that we pay there for the deputy coroners. So right now, there's no way to really practice to see how many death investigations are conducted by our coroners because no invoices are submitted to our finance department. To say that there were more deaths in 2016, no, 2017 versus 2016 is not a logical answer. What I do have is an overview here. I have an opportunity for, to look at both coroners, because in order to determine who's doing the right thing, you have to look at each coroner to determine the best approach and the best method. Because if we're going to utilize our previous coroner as the standard of excellence, I wanted to make sure that I understood his practice. So if you look here, says coroner Renee Garland's budget review, and I had an opportunity, I work with finance, I serve on the finance committee, and on May fourteenth, 2018, the finance committee reported that Renee Garland's budget, and I'll just read it verbatim, reported coroner Renee Garland's budget is slightly over-targeted at one point seven-two percent. This is now from the previous month's variance of three point ten percent. And coroner Garland has sixty-one percent of her budget remaining to operate through December thirtieth versus 2018. And so right now, she has sixty-one percent of that budget still remaining to date to operate. And the next bone of contention, 2018, the annual budget, her budget is a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Year-to-date expenses as of five nine eighteen is sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. She has some, a year-to-date in conferences, and then her remaining budget is a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-three cents to operate for the rest of the year. And I'm just going to find my PowerPoint. The next slide, if you look at the next slide, I looked at her operation. I wanted to take a look at that operation because I owe the citizens this. And the overall appearance of the office is organized, clean, and efficient. It's automated operation with computerized hard copy documents. Records and management practices align with best practices. Files are systemized and easily accessible. Coroner deputies and the deputy coroner's credentials, they're trained and sworn in to conduct death investigations, transports, local, in and out of the county. Using Twenty-First Century Automated Coroner, they are using a coroner ME software application to compute required information related to death investigations into the Georgia vital record system. There's a sign-in process for individuals entering the coroner's office and aspiring, and right now, I understand that this coroner's office is aspiring to be the first coroner's office in the state of Georgia to obtain accreditation status. When I look at, I made some budget recommendations to the coroner. Purchased six metal trays, this is what they needed to do. We brought those trays in overnight. I asked my county administrator to work with me to increase capacity to hold the deceased citizens prior to being transported to GBI. That's been done. This will ultimately reduce transport fees and take some pressure off the budget expenses. The popular funerals, which are, cost nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for indigent citizens, in 2016 were about thirty-two thousand dollars, and in 2017 is thirty-six thousand, which is still, the correlation is still pretty close. This is an expense that is unpredictable, and the invoices are generated to the coroner's office by funeral homes. And then, I said, last on this slide, is death investigations expenses were targeted as an opportunity for process improvement. The coroner is an elected official, and I cannot dictate how she run her office. However, I believe she respects my experience with controlling budget expenses, budget expenses. I recommend that coroner Garland set targets for the number of deaths that she conducts and set off per month for those death investigations and also for the deputy coroners. When she is on-site, she must conduct that according to Georgia law, Code Forty-Five. She has to conduct the death investigation, but if she's not on-site and her deputy coroner's there, he or she must perform the death investigation. Mind you, your coroners, your deputy coroners are sworn in by state law. They have to be sworn in by the state law, by judge, because they act in a similar role as a coroner when they're out conducting death investigations. And she'll be here in five minutes, and I'll be talking. Let's look at this again. Now, go back to that slide. Yeah. So if you look at your coroner, the current coroner, 2017 and present, Rogers is a regular part-time. We have Axley, regular part-time, Ushry, regular part-time, and you have Bussey, which is a part-time administrator for the office. But if you look at the previous coroner, it's just from 2012 to 2016, we had Axley Transport Mitchell, the person's name is Nathan Mitchell. He was a deputy coroner. Then we had Georgia Decon LLC, and we had, it flipped, the name changed in 2013, it's Georgia Flores &amp; More. So that is not a name, that is a company. We'll go to the next slide. I noticed some differences in operations. Death investigations, the current coroner is charging one hundred and seventy-five dollars, and this is what she charges. And I had a concern, because when I looked at the previous coroner there, his investigations were a hundred dollars. So I wanted to make sure that someone, or I wanted to make sure that we were within the line of, my question is why? I said, why is she charging one seventy-five and he's charging a hundred? Well, she is adhering to the Georgia Code Forty-Five, OCGA forty-five dash sixteen, 2017, that says, a deputy coroner shall be paid a hundred and seventy-five dollars. This law was enacted in 2007. In fact, I read it to you, it says, on and after January first, 2007, coroners shall be entitled to investigation fees of a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Now, remember, our coroners are, they are actually salaried, but let me flip to the one that talks about the deputy coroner. And it says, such fees shall be paid to the deputy coroner of a hundred and seventy-five dollars as well, for their services. So that is what, so she is actually charging what she's supposed to charge by Georgia state law. Part-time employee agreements have been made under her side, if you look here. Part-time employment agreements have been made and entered into between Douglas County, I forgot count, Georgia, through the Board of Commissioners and signed off by the chairman. All the agreements, part-time agreements, have come through the Board of Commissioners. And if you flip on the other side, previous coroner, contracts with Georgia Decon LLC and Georgia Flores &amp; More's did not come before the Board of Commissioners, and that is a third-party contract. And it is, and that contract should have come before the Board of Commissioners, if it's a contract. Only thing that we could find is a vendor application. The vendor application talks about crime scene pickup. It, that's the principal line of responsibility for this particular company, is crime scene cleanup, carpet cleaning, and duck cleaning. So that is volume, and I have the law here, that is volume eleven, resolution page three thousand eight sixty-eight. I'll be willing to share that, and my Board of Commissioners, please feel free to look through your packages. So all third-party, the law says, all third-party contracts and obligations of the coroner's office shall be first approved by the Douglas County Commissioners in order to bind funds of Douglas County. There, there's no record of training. If we look at Georgia Flores &amp; More, whoever that is, there's no record of training. So, but it was, I was able to drill down to a particular name. But the person was trained in 2013. I mean, they started services in terms of death investigations. When you're performing death investigations, you're actually touching these deceased patients. You're taking photographs. So you have to be credentialed and trained. I've been in the healthcare industry over forty years. I understand healthcare very well. And we have licensures, and we have certifications to touch these patients, such as my deputy coroners, who have to be trained, who have to be astute in making decisions and signing off. And I know that Georgia Flores &amp; More's did not sign off on a death investigation. You cannot use that and sign off on death investigation, that name. There's no records to show that Georgia Flores &amp; More's were sworn in by our judges, and they provided services here in the county for three years from twenty, well, really, yeah, 2013 to 2016. They're no longer, as of 2016, they're no longer here. Next slide. Differences. The record management and maintenance of the death-related records are in compliance in the current office. There's also a fifty-year retention on records. I ran the Department of the Navy program for environmental asbestos-related records, and they're required to be stored for fifty years. And also sterilization records in healthcare, all types of records related to patient care, especially ones such as death investigations, have to be retained for fifty years. The previous coroner, record management and maintenance of death-related records are missing and unavailable at this time. I'm trying to find them, and I'm still working on that part because it's a state law. You have those records. So I'm looking for them. We won't make any quick judgments, but I am in the process of trying to find those death investigations. I was able to put my hand on the ones that are in Garland's office. Her office is fresh and new, so of course, it was easy to put my hands on hers, but I could not find the other records, and I am looking for those at this time. My overall assessment, coroner Renee Garland's operations align with the 2010 Georgia Title Forty-Five, OCGA forty-five sixteen twenty-seven, and she is paying her deputy coroners a hundred and seventy-five dollars for investigations as specified by OCGA forty-five dash sixteen twenty-seven. Renee Garland's three deputy coroners have been officially sworn in by judge to perform their duties, and their part-time deputy coroner contracts have been officially approved by the Board of Commissioners. Record management processes are being performed in accordance to state and federal law. It's a fifty-year permanent record compliance requirement. Coroner Renee Garland is responsible for conducting death investigations when present at the scene instead of her deputy coroners, as I said earlier, and the deputy coroners performs investigations in her absence. Based on my comparison and analysis of the current and previous coroner's administrative practices, there were several irregularities identified in the previous coroner's operation, and I owe the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Douglas County assurance that a thorough investigation will be conducted by the proper authorities. In nutshell, the implications, that there were more deaths in 2016, 2017 versus 2016, is, we cannot trace that right now because I can't find the death investigations that were conducted by the previous coroner so that I could compare those numbers. So we don't want to make any false assessments. But at this time, I just want to let you know, I'm still looking for records, records by the state, for Georgia state and its law and its federal law that I have... by the state, for Georgia state and its law and its federal law, that I have to have those records, so I'm looking for those records and I'll report back as soon as possible. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Guy.
Should I come up?
Sure.
I'm not up here to compare 2016 or 2017, I'm up here to talk about what is happening in the office now. And I have to say that anytime somebody comes to me and gives me anything that might be innuendo or personal opinions or what, I always check it out. I do not take people, especially on a hot issue, just what someone tells me, because it could be rumor. Ms. Chairman, you're wrong, the death certificate tells you who pronounces the death. And according to the probate office, this is not my ends figure, these are probate figures, Renee Godwin has not pronounced a death in about six, eight months, about six months, let's give her the benefit of the doubt. If you Google her name, she popped up as working full-time at Hapeville, at the city of Hapeville. She was also driving the county car over there. Now, I had pictures, I have pictures of the county car sitting in the personnel pen, but I also went and checked the fleet tickets to show how many miles she was putting on the car. And I assure you, she was not just driving here in Douglas County, in the county car. During the week of March, the 10th or the 9th, she put over 1,000 miles on the county car. Now she had to go out of state to do that. But I am not after her, I am, I turned it over to the DA, because that puts it in neutral ground. I don't want it to be political. I am not comparing 2016 to 2017, I'm just looking at her figures. I gave it to the law enforcement because I am not an attorney, I do not know the difference or the fine line between being unethical and illegal. That's not my job, I'm not an attorney. So I turned it over to the attorneys to do that. They are doing the investigation. But Mr. Bussy has not been sworn in. This came from the probate judge this morning.
But he's not a coroner.
He's driving, he's wearing a badge, and I might call him the sheriff here, the deputy sheriff. Can you carry a badge and have lights on your car if you're not a sworn deputy?
Question I'm not prepared to answer right now.
Okay. But we need to look at that, plus Mr. Bussy has a cloud over his past that you might want to look at, since he's driving one of our cars. The state of Georgia does not belong to the organization that Ms. Godwin attended in Las Vegas. They don't belong, in fact, there's not but 10 states in the whole United States that belongs to that organization. She was just two or three months into the, her job, and she goes outside to Las Vegas on a very expensive trip to an organization that we don't even belong to. It wasn't her required training. But the fleet tickets will tell you a lot about her vehicle. I have the fleet tickets if you want to look at them. When she came before us in 2017 and asked for all these deputies, she used wrong figures. I have proof of that from the probate court. She said there were 70-something deaths in the months of January and February, there was only 30-something. So she enticed us with wrong data. So that kind of puts us in a kind of embarrassing situation too. Georgia Decon and Flores is actually Mark Alcaraz, who was a deputy, he was sworn in.
And he didn't train until 15?
I don't know about the training, but I'm just saying, he, that's his business, that was his business to clean up crime scenes. But I'm not going to compare what happened in 2017, 2018. Cremations, Jennifer, you just gave me a report recently, the cremations are pretty well on track. They're about a third of the budget that she has spent. Madam Chair, you sat there at the last meeting and said, that's why her budget was running up, it had nothing to do with cremations. It has to do with gasoline and her part-time employees. She is utilizing her deputies to do all of her work. Until recently, she informed one of them that she was going to have to cut their hours because she was being forced to do some of the investigations. The sheriff's office also has a report that tells what coroner shows up out there. And I did just about three months of them. She showed up on maybe four or five, but she didn't do the reports. She didn't do any of the reports, she let somebody else do it. That was, that also showed up on the scene. Like I say, if she shows up on the scene, she should be doing the reports. But she should not be using a county vehicle for her personal use, and I want to know where she went, March the night, the week of March the night, because she was not at training, according to the guidance. But I do check my figures. I don't take anybody's word for anything when it comes to the business of this county. I have to check it out myself. And I've talked with the, I've gotten records from the probate office, I've gotten records from the fleet and everything, shows that there's an refusal of a vehicle that she has been given.
Anyway, Commissioner Guy. I have one slide that I didn't, I have an opportunity, can I stretch this? If we just, and I know Commissioner Guy said she didn't compare, but the only way I could get to a reasonable, reasonable answer, I had to compare, because I just can't go one side, I'm very impartial, I'm very fair, so I wanted to look at both sides. So if I looked, and I don't have a dog in the fight, all I'm doing is giving the facts and I owe the citizens of Douglas County a response. When you look, if you look at these investigations, Georgia Flores and Moore, Georgia Flores and Moore, and Axley and that maker, they did a total from 2013 is when Georgia Flores and Moore came on, it was 578 total, and the charges were about $100. If you look at, if you, if this was $100, this fee total, if you add all this up, this is based on $100 for death investigations, but if you had really been following the state law of $175, it would be $101,001.50. And that's why Godwin's budget is up, because she is paying her coroners, her deputy coroners, $175 according to Georgia state law. So this is $63,000, so quite naturally, it's going to appear that your budget is looking a lot better, you're performing better, when actually you're not, you're not paying your deputy coroners, whoever this person is, you said, Alcaraz, you're paying him $100, and really you're supposed to pay him $175, but that's for a whole discussion. So if you look at this total, this is really what should have been paid, $101,63. So to really say that her budget is off, we really don't have a baseline. It's not a baseline there. To really say, if you look at that trend there, so we need to say, is there really a baseline? Absolutely not, because he didn't pay the right amount to his deputies, so we don't have anything really to compare with. So with that being said, anybody else have anything? Commissioner Robinson? You're going to sit from there, you'll talk.
I don't want to stand up.
Okay, good.
If that's okay with you.
No, you're fine, I'll sit down.
All right. We're not trying to make it that type of show.
Can you speak up, please?
We run the show.
If I calm down.
No, I just can't hear you, I never can hear you.
No, no, I'm dealing with the table, I'm just not going to make that type of show, which I just don't want to stand up, please, this is not about me. Don't make it so defensive.
I can't hear you now.
All right, so here we go. I'm going to speak as much as I can, so please pay attention. In listening to this, I'm going to pick back up where I left off, all right? Be definitive about what you say. The coroner provides a very, very important function to the county. My last comments that were sort of construed, it's not a dismissiveness about what it is by size, it's $200,000. It's about structure, it's not very complex, right? I mean, you guys know how it is, when you look down, it's eight quarters, which is about $2. It doesn't take a rocket scientist, I can take five quarters off the table just like that, to sort of get what this is really about, right? So I want to come back to, you know, again, I know there's a lot of innuendo, a lot of messaging, a lot of slandering in the media, you know, I just don't run from it. I just call it like I see it, because like, okay, all right, we get it, good video clip, great. But it didn't change the point, it's like, but it still didn't change that, okay, the math is still what it is. I'm going to stand on the side that you have to look at historical, okay? That's important, right? You've got to understand the context of where you're coming from, like, okay, are you performing or not performing? To be convenient, to only look at today, it's like, okay, well, you can do that, as my District 2 person would say, yeah, you can say whatever you want to say. Yes, you can. But it doesn't mean that I have to agree with your assertions, right? So I'm listening to this about this coroner, I'm like, gosh, y'all have really pushed this to a place like, you really want to go here? Did you, did the county really need to come here? I agree, right, you don't want to go backward. I know why you don't want to go backward. I get why y'all are defending the prior coroner. I get the relationships. We get it. But it's like, is this really necessary for the county? Right? We took that audit, transitional audit, all the way to the point where we assume responsibility for the county. And we came with the spirit like, okay, there were some that was like, no, take it out, all the way, prosecute, all the way, right? And it was like, no, let's be calm, let's transition properly. Everybody's new. We had across the board, new sheriff, new chair, new everybody. Everybody was like, we got to come in. The question was, did this, now, again, I'm on the progressive general assembly, you know, I get to come and look at what the administration, so the question is, what did the administration do to onboard new countywide people? Who sat down and took the chair, the sheriff, the tax commissioner, and the coroner through a process so they can appreciate everything that needs to be done? Who sat down and explained to them what our vehicle process is? I'm talking loud enough just so everybody can hear, not that I'm animated. Who did that? Who sat down and said, okay, well, you have options, you can get a car, but you know, we do have car allowances, right? Who sat down, whose responsibility within the administration? Look, I'm part-time, I show up, what, I tell each other every now and then, right? You know, every now and then I got to come in and check and inspect any office in record at any time, right? All right, so I come in, I check, I like, so who properly brought these new administrators in to really understand their options? Or did we just have, so, you know, we just were convenient and let them find their own way? That's typically why you have transition teams, they're bringing in with leadership, they bring their own team in. Because you have typically, or, you know, you have what they call administrative obstruction, internal bias, all those things exist right here in Douglas County. I'm not playing with what I'm looking at, I mean, I'll let y'all go on, do your, do all your dancing, it's like, okay, all right, I'm just going to sit back and look at this, and it's like, okay, what I see is, you can do what you want to do as elected officials, everybody can weigh in from their perspective. It's not that I'm not concerned. I don't agree that the coroner should have given the car to her assistant, whatever his role was, and the reason is that, but she did have a policy that was written. And I'm like, well, who in the administration sat down with her and said, well, we got a policy? Now remember, we're the highest governing authority at the local level, so then ours would override that, but in the aftermath, she created her own. She was compliant with her policy. But who from the administration went across there and did that? That's not my job, right? So who took their responsibility to reconcile this? I have a problem with that, right? All right, so it's like, okay, well, you know, you need to take that back now, that I don't, even Kelly Robinson doesn't agree that that person can't have a car, unless they're on assignment, but you can't assign them one, so that's one, I would do it, you got to take a hit for the team on that one, right? As relates to, again, whether a person can have a car or not, how they use it, I mean, that's up to them, right? They got to be responsible for that. I think there's a policy that speaks to cars and usage, but then we do allow certain, like the sheriff, they get their, they get to do what they want to do with their cars. Now, they may have additional vehicles, I'm not getting into that, I'm not trying to, but I'm saying they have choices, right? But I'm saying, take it off the table and just give them a car allowance, and then it's a new point, like other people that are here in the county, you have options. Next, I'm going to just go finish with the five things that were cited last, and the third one, this whole notion of using deputies, and that we, you know, this whole, again, I'm just, I listen to the, we don't have to do it the way it was done for 50 years. You don't have to maintain the status quo. You have a newly-elected person came in and says, I want to do it this way, I want to make sure that everybody has a death certificate. My father died in 2012, and I'm sitting up there in Cleveland, Ohio, he died of cancer, we're in Cleveland, you know, I'm in there, oh, I'm down there with a medical examiner. So I know, like, I know first, like, okay, so we want to do, like, I don't know, my sister's looking at me, she's the caregiver, but I'm, for whatever reason, they think I'm supposed to be that guy. And like, I'm having like, but I want to know what that is, just like I want to know my birth certificate, when I see my father and my mother and all that, I want certified. So I think if she's bringing that to the table that you've never done, that's it, I like that. That there needs to be a medical exam for everybody, send a body over there and come back and give a record. That's fine, yes, it's going to cost more than the prior administration, but that's the way she wants to do it, that is fine. Just because he, then I'm not going to maintain the prior administration's views on things. That's why the whole point, you hire new people. Why would we maintain the status quo? They hired her 140,000 people, the majority says, when she has an idea, she has a vision for how she wants to do it, and she said what she was going to do, and she's doing it. So the fact that now that's more expensive, it's like, well, no, I knew what I was signing up for, one more time, I paid attention to what was happening. Now, we're going to keep going. This whole notion of whether or not she should pick up bodies or not, and all this, you was, the conversation about when she's a woman, she don't have to pick up a 200-pound body? Do y'all know what they really do? And so she uses deputies, that's fine. Now I agree with Madam Chair, and I agree with Madam Guide, okay, now if you're on-site, you got to sign off on that. But just like the sheriff, the sheriff can, no offense to my deputies, but I'm using the sheriff just loosely, the sheriff can arrest you and put you in handcuffs, or he can use his deputies, right? Tell me if I'm wrong, but I think he still has the power, if he wanted to actually arrest somebody, he could. The same thing with the DA. The DA can go over there and argue a case within the Superior Court, or he can get his A.D.s, right? Tell me if I'm wrong. Likewise, the coroner can, like, she could either do it herself, or she can use her deputies. Now, why are we being convenient and trying to say, you're trying to marginalize and say that she only supposed, like, no, I'm not buying that narrative. She is not boxing, we only do this, she can run it the way she want to, she is across a countywide seat. So why are we taking this position that she has to do it the yodely way? I'm not buying that. I won't support that. I'm not hearing her defense, but I'm hearing from what I see from District 2, it's like, no, she gets to do it her way, just like people can say what they want to say, she can run it her way, and if she wants to outsource it, then that's fine. If the prior guy wasn't going to pick people up, that was his choice. Last point, about the money, always follow the money. So, but the last thing that came to my attention, again, I really had no opinion, again, just contrary to, again, when we're talking to the dismissiveness, which I thought was somewhat insulting. Last time the coroner couldn't be here, so it was brought to my attention, right, put me in court, not here, I said, okay, we can't cancel this. We got to allow the public to hear this. So I became the second to Madam Chair, like, no, Madam Chair, we got to have that audience. One more time, I enabled that, that's like, no, they need to get somebody over here. It's that important to the public. It was that important. So here we are, in full circle, right? And so now we're here in this meeting, and what was important is saying, okay, when the guy said at the meeting, which I do appreciate him, I don't remember, he doesn't, they were just up there talking, and he said, wait a minute, I'm supposed to be paid this and I was only paid that. And my issues with it. There's a variance in pay? Do you know the labor law? Whoa, wait a minute, we got contracts out there to one sign up? Now, where's the check and balance within administration, right? So, again, my, my Director of Purchasing is not here, but I had this conversation with him last week. He said, Ms. Robinson, go ahead, say what you got to say. Because he said, hey, I brought this up to the administration that I thought that that was wrong. You got to remember that. He mentioned it. I said, look, Director, I heard you. I'm going to bring this up next week. He said, go ahead. So I'm not, this ain't about you. The fact is, is that, why are y'all running money through this, this like, somebody, it's like, this is wrong. Right? And then you're not paying people in it. And then I'm looking at this list of reports. Let's, let's keep the math right. Okay, so you're paying some people above 175, you're paying some people below 100. I'm like, what are the money? You keeping the margin? Now, I'm not a criminal investigator, but I, I am good at like, okay, I know where this is about to go. Y'all were playing with this. Y'all took this to a place where it's like, ooh, really? We can pretend like, okay, I'm just not going to listen to that la, 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 la. I'm not going to listen to the other side. It's like, guys, is this what you really wanted? Right? I mean, and then the, wait, the undertone is so bad. And I'm like, guys, come on, we can do better than this. And sometimes you can't even pull up. I know, sometimes, we're down in the path, guys, and looking at, we're down the path like, gee, we're already down that path. You can't pull up. You can't pull up. So my problem is, I'm going to ask my, my Director of Finance, that based on what Madam Chair just said, and I saw the numbers, it looks like that, based on the prior coroner's budget, which we were basing things on, I'm going to ask two questions. Have there ever in the history of the prior coroner, has a director or anybody in this county gone over budget?
Yes.
And does that happen more than once a year, and any given one person? I mean, not all the time, but just?
Yes.
And do we normally monitor this in the Finance Committee meeting, that it is recognized that there is somebody who's over?
Yes.
Okay? And is there normally conversations of corrective or not corrective, or is there some type of explanation that exists within the finance report to talk about those variances?
Yes, we talk about the explanations, and if it's going to smooth out before the end of the year.
Of course, it's going to be out the end of the year. So if I give you a budget like any other constitutional officer, like you directors, you got your budget to manage. Isn't that not an expectation? You allow you to manage it, you got to the end of the year. Now, when you tracking, you will go off the cliff, but right now, we won't allow it. I look at the same thing. Have we ever had anybody, whether it's constitutional state director, come at the end of the year and all of a sudden like, oh my God, I'm over budget? Have you ever had an instance of that?
Yes, we have.
Okay? I can think of one, maybe infrequently. On the judicial side, every year, there's conflict attorneys. There's no way to estimate how many people got, as you know, there's a state law that says what? That every child, right? Every child, every parent, grandparent, whatever guardian, everybody gets an attorney. And there's no way to estimate that. No more, you can estimate the number of deaths. You guys are playing with numbers. It's like, guys, you can only do the best that you can, but you can't anticipate. Every year, we say, well, we understand that there's a variance on the judicial side, and what do we do? We have to acknowledge it, like, okay, they gotta get their attorneys. Same thing with these deaths. We're not going to leave bodies on the floor because all of a sudden, we're going to get down here to the end. If it's tracking and they're managing it reasonably, this is, well, but there are more deaths. Or better yet, it's a more accurate death because the deaths that y'all had, y'all didn't even have the paperwork. There's no record. Madam Chair was very nice about those records. I'm just not that guy. It's like, where the records at? Where are the records? But then we want to be convenient about how we want to emphasize this data versus that data. Tell the whole story. Show the whole video. Don't just be convenient. So, again, the coroner can pretty much, she, she has a right. You guys who hired her, hired her to make decisions. And again, we're not going to leave bodies on the table. Right? We're, we're, we're not going to leave them there. But she has a right to sort of bring a newness to this. It says, look, but I want everybody to have a death certificate. I want to do what's right. So right now, she is not, you want to get into the like, okay, whether she goes to training or not, okay. She's got to be kind of like my Mr. Sports House, again. That's something you. Right? You, you handle that what you think is reasonable, and if you think you can get through with that, then that's fine. I'm not, I'm not going to worry about that. But there is, there has to be a reconciliation of, of prior debt. If I owe somebody, and so I guess my question, my final question, to my Finance Director, which is, based on what Madam Chair just reported, and based on that report, 101,000 was the number?
Yes, sir.
That it should have been, based on the historical?
Yes, sir.
And it came in, what, 63,000?
December 64.
Six, six threes have changed, that's fine, alright. So that means that there's a variance in what somebody should have been paid. Correct? What?
That's correct.
37, 36,000? Alright, I'm good with my math. $37,000 that we owe somebody is in defer conversation. I want it with the public to think about that. That this county, pretty much, if you work for the coroner's office, it's like that guy sat up here and said, just like, well, gee, so what do you do? They just sort of go, give you a little bit, and then give you friends more? Because based on this report, it looks like you had some above and below the numbers. So, okay, there was no consistency. I get why you don't want to go back and look at that. Right? I get that, okay, we're friends, and you, you know, you can't separate the two. See, I'm, I'm not that common, so I can ask and be very serious about the questions I'm asking, like, now, they don't get in my way, like, okay, I think that man deserves to get paid what he paid. Now, I know that this whole 37,000 is probably not one person. Is that correct? It's probably multiple?
Four.
It's four people. I tell you what, at this point, because they begin, it's getting into sort of an HR matter, it sounds like we probably, you're going to validate these facts. I would encourage you to talk to HR and our legal. Ken, would you think it would be an HR issue, a HR topic to take offline? Ken?
The pay issue?
Yes.
Yes, legal and or?
Legal, alright, sorry, Madam.
Sure.
Will you, Director Perry in Council?
Yes, sir.
And sort of figure out a real answer and come back with an opinion on what really is. Who we should pay, who we should not pay, W9, W2, can you reconcile that truth?
Yes.
It has nothing to do with criminal investigation. I just want to know, if I owe somebody, I want to make sure that they're properly paid. Can we do that?
We can do that.
Thank you, Madam. Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, I think that's all I had, unless the coroner was here, I would ask different questions, but I want to come back against those five that were asserted. I, I, I think it's unfortunate, but again, stuff's always healthy to make. It's okay with opposition and different opposing views. It's fine. I just, just keep it in a fair way. Right? Just not make it personal. Just, just keep it on the process and the facts, and as Moe said, don't make it about the people. Madam Chair, you.
Commissioner Mitchell. Okay, I wanted to address some of the things that we, um, was talking about with me. Who'd you call up?
Commissioner Mitchell.
Alright, go ahead.
You guys have been debating, I mean, this is, this is.
I know, and I just wanted to clarify some of the things.
You should shut it. But what I would like to do, though, is, I know there's a lot of conversations that being had.
Can I, can I ask that he come up here? Because I can't hear.
I'll do it this way, then. There's a lot of conversations that's being had. I just think it's probably proper that we at least allow the coroner to have this conversation, to be a part of this whole conversation. I think we're all.
She's here.
Yes, quite, I know she's here. That's, that's why I just want to ask if she would come forth and enlighten us as to where we are, what these conversations that, or your, your report of what that is, and give you an opportunity to kind of share your side of the story. And then I'll conclude at that point, if you don't mind. Yes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. First of all, I want to say, in reference to the training and lost papers, that training is for, to get the coroner's office nationally certified, accredited. And it would be in the only, this would be the only county in the state of Georgia to have that certification. That's what the training was for. I have here my statistical report for 2017 versus 2018. And I'm going to show you what we have and have, have the difference in the number of deaths. The primary purpose of the coroner's office is to certify death investigation that's all under the jurisdiction of the coroner under Title 45, known as the Georgia Death Investigation Act. Not every death need to be violent in nature. Coroner can investigate natural deaths as well. An example would be a decedent who had not been to his doctor and over a year yet died of natural causes. Doctors who have not seen a patient would not sign off on a death certificate. So that falls under the coroner and the medical examiner. Another example would be a decedent who is admitted to the hospital in an unconscious state and does not regain conscious within 24 hours. If they pass at the hospital within 24 hours, that falls on the coroner's jurisdiction. Coroners as part-time employees. By definition, coroners and deputy coroners are part-time county employees. This means that the coroner's office is not their full-time job, but rather an on-call and as-needed occupation. This means that just like any other part-time job, coroners and deputies can and oftentimes do have other jobs outside of the coroner's office. Responding to death calls and administrative duties as they arrive. Most full-time employers who employ part-time coroner deputies understand the commitment necessary to the coroner's office and allow the coroner or deputy to respond to calls, even though it's part-time, the coroner office, I like the part-time job. How part-time coroners differ from than part-time occupation? The primary difference with part-time coroners and deputies is that the coroner's office has not, has no set hour. Sometimes, on-call coroners, there's more hours than full-time required. Other times, offices are shorter. Death calls are the primary duty of the coroner, and death is unpredictable. Many coroners do require a certain amount of time in the office for him or herself and a deputy coroner. This fulfills the administrative duties associated with the job. The hours spent in the job do not stop when the investigation leaves the death scene. Many hours, days, weeks, even months can go into an investigation. Filing paperwork, speaking with family, corresponding with law enforcement agencies, and funeral costs, just a few other deputies fulfill. User-behave, coroner-behave, or any-behave used aid in coroner's office and their duty. The most obvious would be a coroner van used to pick up and transport a decedent to and from the state medical examiner for other uses pertaining to coroner business, such as attending meetings, picking up, dropping off records, paperwork, records, etc., any other deputy coroner business with local and state agencies. Douglas County coroner office SOP 9.1A vehicle policy. County vehicles are intended to be used for county business. However, policy allows for reasonable use of vehicles for personal errands by employees who are assigned vehicle on a 24-hour basis to respond to emergency situations. This policy covers the use of three. Coroner vehicles by coroner investigation and other coroner office staff using a vehicle for official business. All employees who drive county vehicles must possess a valid driver's license and evidence of safe driving records. Coroner may designate use of county vehicle as an out-of-county take-home vehicle. Reasonable judgment must be exercised in the use of county vehicles for personal purposes. Permitted use would include any use that results in negligible expense or is justified by compelling circumstances. For example, a court-duty investigator may use vehicle for a personal errand if errand is on the way to their business destination or home at the end of the day, and the errand does not delay their responses to unseen or called. Certain circumstances arise to warrant death investigation outside of the county. While the primary basis of death investigation occur within a county border, certain situations may bring the coroner or the deputies outside the county. If certain situations result in death of subsequent passing of a decedent, even if the decedent passes outside the county border, it still falls under the coroner's discretion to investigate. For example, if accident occurs inside the county and the nearest hospital is in a neighboring county, a trauma center outside the county, the series of events leading to the decedent's inspiration occurs within county borders. Medical intervention should be accounted, but should not limit the incumbent investigation. If a car crash victim is a crash inside Douglas County, is taken to a hospital outside the county, based on proximity to the accident, the Douglas County officials are to take charge of that investigation as that accident happened in Douglas County and should be included in Douglas County vital statistics. Population growth effects and death volumes. Population within a county is directly correlated with the volume of death in certain counties. Particular population growth. Douglas County has experienced significant population growth over the last few years, particularly in 2017. According to MBJ, Douglas's population saw a steady rise in residents inside the county, particularly in 2017, with nearly a 2,000 people a year increase. It stands to reason that with more people population increase, more deaths will occur. While death itself is unpredictable, it is tractable. Every other county which has experienced significant population increase has also seen a rise in deaths and death calls. Douglas County is one point, has a 1.6 growth, double car counted in 2017, population increase of 0.7, and exceeded Georgia's overall growth at 1.3. Title 45 is known as Georgia's Death Investigation Act and its former legislation pertaining to the coroner office. The coroner acts as department head of his or her constitutional office. Title 45 continues. Title 45 authorized the coroner to write his or her own standard operation procedure or manner of office operation and personnel. Have as many deputy coroner as he's or she sees fit, delegate any hall responsibility to deputy coroner that he's or she chooses, delegate overseas inter-investigation of decedent whose case originated inside the county. Any case, whether homicide, suicide, accident, or natural, even outside the county, which originated inside the county, reverts back to the county and is under the jurisdiction of the coroner. If a decedent originated inside the county and circumstances inside the county lead to his or her death, even if the decedent is transported for medical reason or other outside the county, since the circumstances leading to death originated inside the county, it is lawful for the county coroner to take control of that investigation. Deploy deputy coroner as he's or she fit. Certain instances may even require all deputy coroner to be at a scene. It is lawful within the county coroner's authority, dedication of duties is at the coroner's discretion. These, this is a stats of the decedent that passed away 2017 versus 2018. In 2017, from the ages of 0 through 50, you had 10 people to pass away in 17, and nine to pass away in 18, between the ages of 0 and 50. Between the ages of 51 to 100-plus, you had 16 to pass in 2016, and 19 to pass in 2017. In February 2017, ages 0 through 50, you had eight, and in 2018, you had nine. In 2017, from the ages of 51 to 100-plus, you had 16, and in 2018, you had 22. In March, the ages of 0 to 50 in 2017, you had nine. In 2018, you had 16. In March, the ages of 50 to 100-plus, you had 13 deaths, and 2018, you had 20 deaths. April 2017, 0 to 50, you had four. 2018, you had six. Ages 51 to 100, in 2017, you had 12, and in 2013, I'm sorry, in 2018, you had 13. And in May, from the age of 0 to 50, you had two in 2017, and eight in 2018. And 2017, you had 15 for 51-plus and 14 for 2018. These are our stats for the total of death 2017, 2018. In January 2017, you had 26 to pass. In 2018, you had 28 to pass. In February, you had 21 to pass, 24 to pass, and you had 31 in 2018. In February, you had 21 to pass, 24 to pass, and you had 31 in 2018. In March, you had 22 to pass, and in 18, you had 36. April, you had 18 in 2017, and 19 in 2018. May, you had 17 in 2017, and 22 in 2018. These are the causes of death. You had, in 2017, you had 5% of accidental death, 5% of suicide, and 5% of overdose. The other 86% was natural cause death. In 2018, you had 10% accident and 5% suicide, 86% natural cause. February 2017, you had 21% of overdose, 17% of accident, and 63% natural cause. 2018, you had 7% accident, 4% homicide, and 89% natural cause. March, we had 14% suicide, 14% accident, and 73% natural cause. March 18, 2018, you had 24% accident, 5% homicide, 10% suicide, and 62% natural cause. April, you had 6% accident, 6% homicide, 6% suicide, 6% overdose, and 78% natural cause. April 2018, you had 13% suicide and 88% natural cause. 2017, May, you had 18% overdose, 6% suicide, 6% homicide, 6% accident, and 65% natural cause. May 2018, you had 6% suicide, 6% homicide, 22% accident, and 67% natural cause. Cases with weights over 200 pounds. In January 2017, you had 29%, and 2018, 29%. In February, you had 8%. 2018, you had 26%. In March of 2017, you had 27%, and March of 2018, you had 28%. In April 2017, you had 17%, and 2018, 11%. May, you had 35% in 2017, and 36% in 2018. In 2017, there was nine cases with decedents over 300 pounds, and one case with a decedent over 400 pounds. So far in 2018, there have been three cases with decedents over 300 pounds, one case with a decedent over 350, and one case with a decedent over 400 pounds.
Ken, of course.
Okay, yes. Uh, uh, thank you. And, and I don't know, this may be more question for you too, Ken, as well, because I think I'm hearing a couple of different things. I, I heard part-time, full-time, and I don't know, maybe you, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think I heard part-time, which I thought that was the status quo of this particular makeup, but is that the case in Douglas County? Is it considered full-time, or do you know? That's my first question.
Uh, the deputies definitely are part-time by contract.
Right, and I know about that, I'm talking to the coroner.
The coroner's an elected official, not a constitutional office, meaning her dictates don't come from the state legislature, they come from local legislation through the state, not necessarily general law. Uh, she's under local legislation, House Bill 653, which governs her, and that's why you don't have to approve her third-party contracts. As to full or part-time, I don't think the law was clear, obviously. When you don't know somebody's going to die, it's a full or part-time job. Meaning, it's not written somewhere that this is a full-time job or a part-time job. Definitely deputies are part-time.
And the, and the problem is there while I'm asking that question, because if it's part-time and you're trying to do, what I would look at the labor law that we spoke about earlier, that would mean, just say, just from a, a legal perspective, will be 20 hours, I guess, or no more than 30, you know, if you're going to look at an hour, if you're trying to speak on hours, as a part-timer versus a full-timer. But we, I mean, we're not getting, I mean, I'm not going to get into the schematics, but I'm just trying to understand the difference of the two. But, uh...
There, there is no, I want to make sure this part is clear. I don't know about the history, but since y'all approved the deputies' contracts, they're paid on a per diem basis. They are legal within the Fair Labor Standards Act. There is no labor issue with respect to deputies that are under contract approved by the board, at least from the time y'all approved the contract.
Correct.
So there is no minimum wage or hourly issue with respect to those people, at least as of last year when we approved those contracts. I don't remember the exact date.
I think May, maybe, right?
June, May, June.
Okay, okay. So with that, and, and I have to say, your choice in the matter was to, to approach it as a part-time perspective and run your office accordingly.
Yes.
Correct. And with that, and, and the law doesn't state whether or not you could have a, well, even as a constitutional officer, as the sheriff, you can actually have another job elsewhere, correct? It doesn't think that he or she can't, as constitutional officers, could have an efficient stream of income.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not, I think that the only requirement of the deputy, I mean, on the coroner, is to not violate the law, whatever that would be. But I don't think there's a specific law that says that a coroner couldn't have another job.
Or any constitutional officer.
Theoretically.
Right, okay, that's, that's a good idea.
Now, with respect to the, with respect to the deputies, their contract governs their ability to have part-time jobs, which y'all can control. Y'all cannot control what the coroner elects to do about having another job, so long as she fulfills the job that she has.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Okay, and the numbers that you gave us, the numbers that you gave us with the 2017, that was a lot of stuff, and I, I would love to get a copy of that, so I can actually just kind of dissect it a little bit more, so I can get my head, arms around it. Did it also include, I mean, you could look at, I, I mean, a body could be touched or transported or moved one, twice, or three times, depending upon the situation, correct?
No, it doesn't. It just, those numbers are just the number of deaths, not how many times they get moved.
That's what I thought. So, so that number could be a lot higher, or definitely a different number would, we would actually kind of look at, because I, without the transport numbers included in the numbers that you gave, um...
Could have been significantly higher.
Yes. Because, and, and what I'm trying to do is, I'm, I'm trying to get my arms around your expenses.
Okay.
The true expenses, not, because I, we, we can't predict, we don't know when that situation will occur, but we need to be there as a, as a board of commissioners to assure that whenever that happens, that the services that we provide, with the coroner's help, that we're there to make sure that these families are taken care of, correct?
Correct.
So you can't give that number, at least you, you gave me the, the body count, but you didn't give me the transport count.
No.
Because that number would be kind of, be an additional expense, depending upon how many times you move, or, or what's next with the body, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, again, thank you for the information, but I'd love to get, will we be able to get a copy of that, so we can kind of really dissect that and look at it again?
I can email it to everybody.
Yes, yes, because I'd love to get a copy of that, also. I yield back.
Okay. Commissioner Badger?
Uh, yes, ma'am, and I just want to address the fact that it was implied that I was friends with Randy. Uh, I knew Randy probably as well as I do any of y'all. Never came to my house, sometime already, so I was at the chili cook-off, and when he came to buy his tags, he was not a, he was an acquaintance, just like many people are acquaintances here. But, um, my question started, um, way back in 2017, and I wrote you a letter.
You did.
And I, uh, spelled out in the email my concerns about how the office was being conducted, and it was not just about you not doing a, a certain percentage of the work, but it was about the deputies too, and, and the billing of the deputies. So, uh, there was an internal audit, you called for an internal audit at that time, and they backed up what I said. And they even questioned why, um, Ms. Godwin was on-site. Now, um, no, she cannot pick up a 200, 300-pound body, but if you're on-site, why didn't you do the investigation?
I'm a team player.
And let them do the transport.
I'm a team player. I go out and I help them, just like you said.
You get paid a salary, they get paid per call.
Okay, just like you said, I can't lift 200 pounds. There's been cases where they have 300 pounds. I helped them lift 300 pounds. I'm not going to put my deputies in harm's way. And just because I want to go out there to assist them, I can do that. I'm a constitutional officer, I don't have to do anything if I don't want to.
You're not a constitutional officer.
I am a constitutional officer.
You're an elected official.
You're an elected official, you're not a constitutional officer.
But I run my office, and I run it how I want to run it.
Well, um, but if you're on the site, and this was backed up with the internal audit, why didn't you at least do the investigation of the body and do the pronouncing? Um, but, um, you don't transport bodies in your car, so your, your car is not used for transporting bodies everywhere, only the vans are, right? So when you went to Hateful, when you were working over in Hateful, I think you since quit that, uh, that job, but you were on full-time there. Were you, was it a part-time or full-time?
Yes, it was a, a full-time job, and if I'm on-call at the coroner's office, I can, if I get a call, I have to go to that call. And so if I'm in Hayfield, if I'm in Alabama, if I get a call, I will have to leave, and I have my car accessible to go where I want to go when I get a call.
So, uh, how many calls did you do?
I can't tell you how many calls I've called.
From the first three to four months of the year?
I couldn't tell you that.
Well, you pronounced no deaths.
Well, that's, that's good.
Back to October of last year, you pronounced none of the deaths, so you had to be on-scene to pronounce the death. So you were not on-scene, the deputies did it.
You said I gave it to the deputies. I came on-scene, but I gave it to the deputies, because you were there.
That I was there?
Mm-hmm.
What do you mean, I was there?
How could you tell me what scene I'm on?
Well, the sheriff's office, uh, they, they do a report as to what coroner shows up.
Okay.
You probably didn't know that. But, uh, anyway, the law, there is a law governing your deputies, is there not?
Yes, it is.
And it does say that you're to do the work unless you're unable to do so.
It doesn't say the coroner does the work. It, no, it doesn't. It says that the deputy does the work in the absence of the coroner. It doesn't say specifically the coroner do the work. And if it say that, you can show it to me.
The law I read does say that the coroner is to do the work unless they're unable to do so, and then the deputies can.
Okay.
But, uh, that's gonna, that's why, because of all this discrepancy, I don't know what's legal and what's just unethical. So that's why I turned it over to the DA, okay? And that, that's going to be settled right there.
I welcome that.
My concern was the fact that in, uh, 2017, two months in office, you came to us and you quoted all these figures and convinced us that, uh, your work had doubled, um, that there were 78 deaths in January, I mean, uh, calls, not deaths. Now, a whole bunch of people died, but y'all aren't called on every death. So there were 78 deaths, you said, in the months of January and February, where the death certificates prove otherwise. They showed 30-something, I can't remember the exact number, but half of what you told us. So we based our assumption that you needed all these deputies on the figures you gave us.
That's not, that's not why I requested additional deputies. I requested the deputies that the prior coroner had the year before. The same deputies that I have is the same deputies that he had. The only difference, I requested like legislation say, and he did not. He just swore them in, and they worked for him. He did not come to you guys and ask for additional deputies.
Did you ask for so many deputies?
I asked for them, but they was the same one that worked for Randy.
I, I don't care who they were, I don't, I don't know.
I did the right thing. I follow legislation.
But you gave us wrong figures, and our action...
You would get the email, and you can check that on us.
Okay, our action was based on that, but let, let me go on, just with a couple of things. Um, so if the law says that you're supposed to do it except for when you're unable to do so, how can you hold a full-time job outside the county, in your county vehicle, by the way, county gas being paid by taxpayers of Douglas County? You don't think that's an abuse?
I'm a part-time employee, so I can work a full-time job. Part-time don't mean I have to come here from 8 to 8 to 4, or whatever. I can come here anytime. I can come at night, and you don't get all your calls in the daytime, you get calls at nighttime. I have administrative paperwork to do, just like any other head of the...
But you have an assistant in the office that does that, Mr. Badger?
He doesn't do everything.
He doesn't do the obvious...
I handle the administrative part as it relates to purchasing and all of that stuff, and, and my policy, and trying to get my office accredited.
Well, like I say, that is why I turned it over to the DA, because, uh, that's for somebody else with a legal mind to determine. I think it's abuse, but that's my opinion.
That's right.
A lot of people think it's an abuse, but that's their opinion. I, I try to stick to the facts, and I always, uh, investigate. When somebody comes to me and tells me something, I investigate to see if there's anything, data, that will back them up or contradict them. So I always do that, and, uh, it is no personal vendetta I have against you. When you came to us and asked, when you were two months in the job, and asked for 81% raise, because this was a full-time job. You, you stated that, that this is a full-time job. This is not a part-time job, but you can hold a part-time, a full-time job...
And you told me it was a part-time job.
...in other county, and, and do your work here. That is fine. That's where, I don't know where the line of being illegal and, and...
Okay. I hear you. Let the district attorney figure it out, not you.
Okay, so we, we're done? Any other comments? And I'll just wrap things up. Uh, thank you so much today, coroner, for sharing what, what's going on in your office. Very great information, good information, and I'm quite sure the citizens have a different respect for your office and the things that you're doing. Also, but I want to just talk about full-time, uh, jobs for a part-time coroner. I had an opportunity to benchmark and look at other counties. Uh, these, uh, part-time coroners in other counties have full-time jobs, and they are using their vehicles because they're on-call 24 hours a day. So I was able to do some due diligence, because again, I'm very impartial, want to be fair, and I looked, so I was surprised to find out that they are, they have full-time jobs, because $32,000 or whatever they make is not enough to subsidize the needs, and, uh, the special needs of their families and so...
You say they had full-time jobs?
They had full, full-time jobs.
Full-time jobs.
Yep, full-time jobs in conjunction, in the, that three, and they're close by. So they have full-time jobs?
Close by.
Yeah, close by. So we'll talk about those offline. Also, um, as well, I know, Commissioner Badger, you said the DA has your information, because mine has some things that vary, some, some similarities regarding Georgia state law, the, the pricing, the swearing-in. Uh, first of all, I've been in healthcare a long time, and I talked about this, and I'm, I was rather kind earlier, but we know that you do not sign Georgia laws and laws on anybody's death investigations. So I, once we find these documents, and records are very important, and I have to have those records to move forward, because it is a Georgia and a federal state law. So I'm looking for records, and when I find those, we can, I'll, I'll provide another update to the citizens, but right now, uh, this investigation is in the hand of the district attorney as well regarding these numbers, because I'm very, I was blown away, wasn't looking for discrepancies, but wanted to know why there was a difference in 100 versus 175, and I just started just trending the information, and I was shocked, so...
Can I ask you a question? You said at the last meeting, that she was over her budget because of the number of cremations. However, the finance department has just said cremations are in line with, so it was not, it has nothing to do with cremations. Did she tell you that?
No, she, she... No, she didn't have to tell me. I looked at it, I did see that the cremations, and that was me. I looked at it, she didn't give me any information about cremations. I looked at that, and also I was looking at, but if you look at her death investigations, which are driven by the deputy coroners, I know we saying they're up, but she's charging 175, they're not up. She's charging the price, so if you're kinda comparing. So what are we comparing her operation to? I have nothing right now to compare it with, because his was erroneous. He was not charged by state law, and I keep saying law. And I wanna, I don't wanna try to beat sound elementary, but law means the law. You charge 175, and you pay 175. We don't pay our deputy coroners $100. So I don't wanna dig, I took a very deep dive. It was a lot of irregularities that I discovered. That information, the DA has it, so we'll let him look at it, and he'll decide. Any other questions from the board of commissioners before I move forward? Okay.
I say move forward.
Okay, let's go to the next item on the list. Thank you all so much, you have the approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes for tomorrow, please look at those as I will discuss those tomorrow, and then we can approve accordingly. County administrator, do you have any business today?
No, ma'am.
Okay, tab number four, authorization to accept a federal transit administration grant, GA 2017-02301, for furnishing and equipment for the transportation center addition, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, subject to final review. Mr. Gary Watson, there you are.
Good morning. Madam Chair, items four and five are related. So with your permission, I'm gonna talk about number five first, and then we'll go back.
Okay, tab number five, authorization to issue an invitation for bid for the construction of the addition to the Douglas County multimodal transportation center. Mr. Watson, Director Watson.
One of the projects that we have in our 2018 budget is to construct an addition to the existing Douglas County multimodal transportation center. This will be a 6,200 square foot addition. It will have administrative offices for multimodal staff and also for the county's Office of Risk and Safety. We'll have a suite for drug and alcohol training, a driving simulator, a 40-person lecture hall, and a training bay for van and other vehicle drivers. The main purpose for this addition is to improve the efficiency of our existing services. If we didn't add any other services moving forward, we would still need this building, the facility for what we're already doing. It's, this is an estimated project of $1 million to $1.2 million. 80% of it will be paid by a federal grant. Our architect has finished all the designs and drawings of it, and we're ready to go out now and ask for construction bids from contractors. And so that's what we're asking from the board today, is to give us authorization to go out for bids.
Any questions from the board of commissioners, Commissioner Guyton?
Yes, Gary, do you have a rendition of it? Did we get to look at it?
I've already sent that out, yeah. A good while back, I sent a floor plan and a shot.
A drawing of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. How long ago was that, I'm sorry?
Probably six weeks, yeah.
Oh, that's why, I forgot it. Okay, but, and the cost is what?
$1 million to $1.2.
And you're adding how many square feet?
6,200.
And this is gonna house the training for the safety? Is he gonna be down there too?
Risk and safety, yes, ma'am.
And he's gonna be doing all the blood tests? And when there's an accident, we always have to have a drug test.
Yes, ma'am. We will be able to do that in-house at our facility.
Is that gonna be saving us some money?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. We don't do it for the sheriff's office though, and they do their own, right? All right, I hear that.
Commissioner Mulcahy?
This is gonna be a multi-use expansion.
Yes, sir.
From what you say, it's gonna be not directly tied apples-to-apples in terms of ridership.
Correct.
But my question is about, just more of curiosity question. Ridership has dropped somewhat. And, but at the same time, over the last several months, fuel costs have gone up. Have you seen any indication that people are availing themselves of ridership and the express buses? Is it too soon to tell? And what's your crystal ball say?
We're beginning to see a little uptick. It's nothing real significant now, but this is something that's going on throughout the metro Atlanta area related, well, actually throughout the nation. Its express bus ridership is down, martyr-ship, martyr ridership is down as well. But it tends to be cyclical. We'll go through a down period, and then in a little while, we'll pick back up.
So just immediately with the rise of fuel costs, we're just barely seeing any change right now?
Right, if it continues to go up, if it goes up over $3, we'll start seeing a pretty good increase.
I yield back, Commissioner.
Commissioner Watson?
Yeah, I was gonna piggyback, but you noted about seasonality, that, you know, when you're looking at data, it's not just one moment in time. You have to look at it over a period of time and see how it plays out. As relates to, but to that point, when we talk about ridership, just as we can, did we not start our public engagement to begin to educate people about the various services that we currently offer to the public, so that...
Yes, sir, it's going on now, correct.
That accurate statement? The reason I ask that is that, as relates to that facility, what are the things, I heard what you're going to offer there? What's actually in the transportation services center today? What are the core functions, just top-level core functions that are performed there? Again, for the record, so people understand what's actually here.
Well, certainly, one of the main functions is administration of the overall multimodal program and all the paperwork, documentation, applications that we do with our funding sources. In addition to that, we have a customer service function in our building for the express bus, for our van-pool program, for the voucher program. And we also have a very comprehensive training function as well for our van-pool drivers, for drivers in the senior citizen program, and also for the drivers in our voucher program.
And I appreciate, I'll go back after this. So what I'm hearing is that, is there an online version to, I'm a senior, I'm disabled, I'm whomever? Do I always have to come in, or do, can it be done online? Or can I do it by phone, or?
All of the above.
All right, so any form, so if I'm a senior, I just can't get over there. I mean, I just, I mean, I could, but it's a hardship. But what you're saying is that you will facilitate the intake process for application on the phone, or if those who are technically savvy, you'll, were able to also accommodate them as far as an online application? Because you know, some parts of our government, we're just not getting our HR online. So I had to ask the question, is everything online or not?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Good job, you.
Okay.
I just wanna point out on these FTA grant applications, for some reason, the computer now on the agenda is saying that legal approved the application for these grants. We don't approve any grant application. All we do, if y'all approve the grant application, we simply review it to give Gary authority for the chairman to sign the document, meaning does the chairman have authority to sign this document based on board action? So I'm not sure why that's being added, but we don't approve applications for grants.
Should we amend that? Are you okay with just it as a work citation?
I think it needs to be taken off, 'cause it's not accurate. I don't know how it got on there.
Commissioner Guyton?
Thank you, ma'am. I do have some figures about the buses and the vans. The ridership from 2015 to 2017 is down 37.14. And that's on the vans. Now, the buses, the red buses, is down 32%. That's gonna take a lot to make up. And you say it's because of gasoline prices?
Well, there are several different reasons why ridership is down. Obviously, gasoline prices are one of them. Another factor is that more and more people are telecommuting, working from home, not having to drive in for a while.
So that's not gonna change?
No, that's not gonna change.
That's probably gonna grow.
And then another thing that hopefully will change back is that a lot of agencies, particularly government agencies, are no longer paying subsidies for their people to ride public transportation. So it's been several things that has contributed to it. But again, let me point out that this just isn't for our program. It's for public transportation in general, everywhere.
Well, I would just take our figures.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I hear that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Director.
You going to the next?
Ready for the next one?
Yes, we're ready for the next.
All right, if we're going to build this facility, we're going to need furniture and equipment for it. So we've received a new federal transit administration grant to help us purchase these items. Again, this is a budgeted item in our 2018 county budget. For this purpose, we'll be receiving $240,000 in federal funds, which requires a $60,000 local badge. And one of the key components, one of the highlights of this furniture and equipment is a driving simulator that will be able to train van drivers, shuttle drivers, county personnel who drive any type of vehicle. We'll be able to utilize this machine.
Any questions from the board of commissioners?
Okay.
Commissioner Watson?
Yeah, real quick, to your point about simulator, do other counties have a simulator? Or, I mean, the preponderance of counties that have your function, do they have simulators? Or not really, that's just sort of a, I won't say cutting-edge, but it's sort of a progressive?
Well, for a program like ours, a program like our size, yes, sir.
They do have. And so, again, is there a profit center opportunity for other counties that may not have it? They can come over and certify, almost like our fire or whatever. I mean, is there an opportunity there? I haven't looked at it from that perspective, but I'm always curious when I hear, like, we've got something that another county doesn't, can it be shared? Like, if we're not using a simulator, can somebody schedule classes, come over and certify? I don't know.
That's something that we can look in, but big truthfully, I think it'll stay pretty busy with the people that we have. Not, when I say the people we have, I mean our program plus other county employees.
You think that we should take this out? Or you think we're good?
Yeah.
All right, we're good. Thank you. Here, you go. Okay. Thank you, Director Watson. Before I go any further, I'd like to introduce our board of commissioners interns. They're here, excited, we're ready to go with, for this wonderful internship and power-packed rigor that we have planned for them for the next eight weeks. And I would like to introduce each one individually. My intern, please seat you all, and I'll ask you all, my interns, to stand and just give us something. Share something brief about what you plan to learn in this internship program. First of all, I would like to introduce Leland Alexander, who is my intern. Leland, please stand, and let's give him a hand, y'all. Did I please share?
I just finished my first year at Georgia, in that college over in Mooresville. I graduated last year from New Manchester High School as well. I was in Fame, in the Mastery Chorus, as well as in the a cappella group. They're doing great things, they just went to New York, like, I guess, what, like a few months ago as well. As far as what I'm trying to learn from this opportunity, I'm studying in business administration, and as you guys know a lot, what we're trying to do is bring more economic, you know, progressiveness and opportunities into our county, and we're doing pretty good at it so far. And I wanna kind of piggyback off learning how to do that, and as well as how that functions in government, because of course, as an entrepreneur, you have to relay that onto yourself as well, how to interact with government officials and whatnot. And so that's what I'm looking forward to learning and helping along with the process to start. So good to meet all of you, and I shall see you guys again.
Thank you.
Commissioner Guyton's intern is Huntley Bradley. Hunter, I don't know why I said Hunter, Bradley.
I graduated from Alexander High School like three weeks ago.
Congratulations.
I wanna major in business. I wanna learn from this experience and learn from local government and hopefully open up a restaurant here in the future. I'm open to anything right now.
Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Mitchell's intern, Jasmine Moore.
Jasmine, okay, Jasmine.
Hi, I'm Jasmine. I just graduated from Kennesaw three weeks ago. What I hope to learn, this has been very interesting, being here.
You picked a good day.
So, you know, I just wanna learn from everybody and just, you know, just, I may be here one day. So I'm just really excited to be here.
You're welcome. For Commissioner Mulcahy, we have Serenity Hill. Serenity?
Hi. Actually, just said Serenity Hill. I just graduated from Alexander High School. I was senior vice president, senior vice president, board scholar, involved in various clubs and service projects. I was going to Kennesaw in the fall. I planned to major in communications. And I just, like she said, being here today specifically has been an eye-opener to what actually goes on behind the scenes.
Yes, wait.
This is very interesting to me, and I actually enjoyed watching you all go back and forth and hearing the numbers and seeing how everything weaved in together and how you all actually took the time, actually like, this is what's going on with your money, and you wanted the public to be so well-involved. That's what I liked about this experience, and it's what I like to keep seeing more as I would care over the summer.
Thank you.
We can use more Serenity.
And last but not least, we have Anaya Gibson, she's here for, she's an intern for Commissioner Robinson. Anaya?
Hello, everyone. I see a few familiar faces from last year. Hello, my name's Anaya Gibson. I'm a rising junior at the University of Georgia. I am a journalism major, Spanish minor. And yes, in terms of what I plan on learning, well, as you all know, I was here last year. And so, just like their experience being in the same workroom that I was last year when I first came in for orientation, my same, I had the same response of, "Oh, my goodness." This gets bad sometimes, like, okay. And so coming back again, you know, I told them, like, okay, the work means can get, like, they get things done, so just prepare yourself. And so even being here again this year, I'm like, yes, same, like, definitely getting the work done. So my plan is to, my plans of being here this year is just to build upon the, you know, the knowledge I learned last year. Having the knowledge last year, coming in here again from the inaugural class, I've definitely learned a lot, and I believe that coming here again, I can maybe even apply the knowledge I learned last year, even help my fellow interns in terms of, you know, just apply some of the knowledge that I gained. And also, because I'm a journalism major, I'm now taking my official major classes this coming year, maybe incorporate some of my journalistic skills that I learned from the classes that I took last year at school and incorporating it into the county government, maybe writing articles or just pitching some ideas in terms of context and creativity to help in our government, 'cause I'm a citizen, you know, seeing the behind-the-scenes works only makes me want to be a part of that as well, so. That is all, thank you.
All right, thank you all, and welcome the board, and buckle up. Okay, tab number six, we'll keep the meeting rolling right along. Tab number six, authorization to approve a claim for a property tax refund for the Pavilion Church Incorporated. As recommended by the Board of Assessors and Tax Commissioner, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Waldorf, how are you this morning?
Good morning.
I'm real hungry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a real simple case. Typically, y'all would not see it, but it's more than three years, so we felt like the other two years had to be approved. What happened was, the Pavilion Church owns two pieces of property on Chapel Hill Road, a house with a lot, and then a second lot next to it. They, back in 2013, they combined the two pieces of property into one parcel. And we made that, the main house parcel, the acreage was quit on that parcel, and they've been paying taxes on it ever since, property. They never have filed for any exemption or anything. But we didn't board out the parcel they combined, so they paid taxes on that, boarded it up... But we didn't board out the parcel they combined, so they paid taxes on that, boarded out the vacant parcel, 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17. And they didn't, we found it in an internal audit, we reviewed properties, and we felt like they needed to be reimbursed for those years they paid double taxes. And that's all that is. It's not over the $2,000 limit in any year, but it's more than three years, which is our legal ability to go back. So, all five years are before you. We recommend that it be approved.
Any comments or questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Benny, if I can answer. Has Bob looked at this?
He did.
And Bob thinks you can go back more than three years?
He does. If the Board of Commissioners were free.
We can.
Right.
Yeah, that's what, Bob's recommendation was, the Board of Assessors cannot go back by three years, but it can come before the Board of Commissioners, and y'all have the authority to go back to extra two years.
Any, Commissioner Agaydo?
Thank you, ma'am. It was really just a mapping error?
When mapping is our problem on our side, we, the mapper properly mapped it as a one parcel. We properly did the paperwork to make the parcel go from the lot, from the house and lot to the house and now two lots. Then we didn't board it out. That was our side. We should have.
What do you mean, board it out?
We should have boarded out the vacant parcel. It should have been removed from our records, because we were having, pretty likely, it had never been combined. So, they were paying taxes on the vacant lot. That was part of the, the approval after it had been combined. So, we missed the combination on our side.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. I yield back.
Okay. Any other?
No, I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tab number seven, authorization to accept a check from the Law Library in the amount of $25,347 for the purchase of a four 55-inch mondo pad, pads and related equipment to be used in the Superior State Juvenile and Master Street Court. Jennifer Holman, Director Holman?
These funds were coming from the Law Library Fund. They wrote the check, and we're holding it in the finance department applying approval. Y'all approve this item tomorrow. I did check with Russ, I don't think he said yes.
We had to step back.
Okay, yeah. I did check with him prior to the meeting and asked him if it ran through the Technology Committee. He said this particular item did not, but there was something very similar about six months ago. And he said these mondo pads are getting very common, just like laptops.
Yes, ma'am.
There was no problems or issue within the technology.
Correct. I talked to him also.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
How much is that? Forty, forty-five?
Four of them for $25,347.
Four. I got it right. And the reason I ask is, I mean, everything doesn't have to be run through a committee. It's got to be an act we ask, and I, I mean, I'm glad that now Guy just said it, because that was a question I had, so I'm fine with that. Does, these mondo pads come with technical support? And this is very practical. Our experience with the mondo pad is such that, and maybe Russ can answer, we don't have to do it now, but I think there's, it's advanced enough where, if you're on the dime and you need to get something done, and I'm especially thinking about my, our peers over in judicial, where you've got lives at stake, right? We've got the, I mean, this is still the business of the people, but I just think from a practical use, can we make sure that there's some type of technical support to make sure we know how to use that tool? Can we just make that as a footnote? And I don't know if there's an extra cost, but I just, I, we're experiencing this part of commission, like, okay, that's killing me, like, why can't that thing work right? Right? What is the problem with it? And so, I think you understand the spirit. I mean, our staff, I mean, they do a great job making these things work for us, right? And so, I'm just trying to make sure that our judicial, who's on a different time schedule, because they've got lives and they got, you get my point? Can we just make a footnote there?
Yes, I'll send a man to Russ and let him know.
All right. That's all I was asking. Thank you, Mr. Aaron.
Moving on. Thank you so much, Director Holman. We'll move to tab number eight. Tab number eight, authorization to accept an award from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council in the amount of $227,438, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. How are you doing?
Hi.
Night day, day to day. How are you?
This is the annual grant that we've received for the last several years from Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. It provides services to children that are coming through juvenile court, skill-based services that we run for, over the summer and through the year.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Come in.
No.
We'll move on to tab number nine, authorization to accept a grant in the amount of $54,636 for the Family Treatment Court, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Mrs. McDay again.
Yes, this is our regular family treatment court grant, where we work with parents that have deprivation cases filed in juvenile court, and they sign up to be in our family treatment court, and we provide them with more intensive services to help them work on their addiction issues.
Any questions for Mrs. McDay?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, real quick, just for record, deprivation cases are cases in which neglect within children, abandonment?
Child abuse and neglect cases.
Ma'am?
They're child abuse and neglect cases that the Department of Family and Children's Services receive.
Okay, so that is.
And they make referrals to us.
They do come in. I was looking for how they came in to us.
Yes.
You've answered. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Tab number 10, authorization to accept funds from Cobb Douglas Public Health for backup redundant communications in the amount of $2,604 and amend the fire department's budget. Chief Spencer.
Good morning. This is a grant that Cobb Douglas Public Health has been giving us for probably the past 15 years. Basically, it's a backup communications, so we use that to help pay for our phones. It's a great relationship with them. We work well with them. We've helped them with a lot of their projects, and they internally helped us with some of our projects, so it's a good partnership.
Any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Sounds good. Okay. And we'll move to tab number 11, authorization to upgrade the pumper truck for the fire department, purchased in 2017 with additional safety-related equipment. Chief Spencer, again.
Yes, ma'am. We did talk about this in our Fire EMS Committee meeting. These were some safety additions that we added to our pumper truck, which added a cost of about $7,400 over what we had bid the truck for. So, we wanted to bring it back to the full board, just to make you aware that we needed to spend this extra money. They are safety-related issues. Probably the biggest cost would be for the additional lighting, emergency lighting, so as we go through intersections, they can see us coming through the intersection. And then we also added disc brakes to the front. We added a steel bumper instead of a chrome bumper. And then we also added bus tile mirrors, which are mounted to the body, not just to the door, so.
Any questions from the Board? Commissioner Agaydo?
Yes, ma'am. Chief, when we bid out for these trucks, we don't have specs that require the steel bumper, the disc brakes, and et cetera?
Well, this particular truck, the bids that we bid out, they met part of them, but didn't meet all of them. And that's kind of what we, it was a loose bid. We call it a loose bid, because this truck was already in production when we accepted the bid. So, we were able to change some of the stuff, and that was one of the things, or some of the things that we changed. We didn't realize they didn't have lighting, and that was the big thing.
So, how much is this going to cost? Is this coming out of splosh?
Yes, this is splosh.
Upgrade?
Yes, ma'am. And we're still under budget on this particular truck, the truck and equipment, so it's coming basically out of the equipment side of the truck.
For the 2017 allocation?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the 2018?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, we talked last week, and so I just, just for the record, so regarding this topic, again, it's tied to this splosh, specifically a pumper truck. I think I was trying to make sure I understood or distinguished the difference for, like, we've got a new fire station that's being built eventually out in District Two off of Thornton Road. And when I think about industrial fires versus house fires, and for the record, for the public, does a pumper truck, do we need different-sized pumper trucks to handle a fire? Talk about what you talked about last week, please.
Okay. All of our pumper trucks are rated at least 1,500 gallons of water per minute, which, that's a whole lot of water.
Right.
And they're multi-use vehicles, so they can handle the small structure house fire, residential fire, or they can also handle a large commercial fire. In large commercial fires, most of the commercial buildings have sprinkler systems that are already built in.
Yes.
A lot of them down on Thornton Road, they have internal fire pumps that increase the pressures for the sprinklers. And of course, we always send more than one truck to a structured fire, so if we send two of these pumpers, then, you know, we've got 3,000 gallons of water a minute we can be floating. So, the pumper truck is the workhorse of the fire department.
Right.
That's your main vehicle that we use to fight fires with.
And that's all I was just asking, to make sure I understood, and again, I'm glad to hear there was appropriate allocation for this item of splosh, and that team oversight is making sure that it's done. But again, for example, we had that explosion right there.
Yes, sir.
This pumper truck would be a tool that would be used to help deal with that, or?
We used about six pumper trucks that night.
Okay, that's.
We didn't want the big tanks to go boom.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get, you know, how does it work? How do the assets use? So, you pull from different stations, we bring them all in there, depends on the size. That got into my whole point about if there's a big fire, a warehouse fire on Riverside Thornton, whatever the case may be, again, they've got internal, but sometimes it doesn't work. You see it on TV, it goes up, and it's like all these trucks. So, I just want to understand, are we properly equipped? And it sounds like we're doing that.
Yes, sir. We actually have one brush truck that we use for off-road fires.
Yes.
It's a smaller truck, but the pump on that truck can still pump 250 gallons of water a minute, so which, for woods fires, that's very good, so.
A dog river park or something, we got to get all the way to the. Okay, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief?
Thank you so much, chief. Twelve, tab number 12, authorization to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Villarica for an early warning signal for the railroad crossing at Mirror Lake Boulevard and Connors Road, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, and which are subject to final review. Director Valencini, how are you?
Good, very. How are you doing? Good afternoon, Commissioners. This item apparently has been also in the works for quite a while. And what the city wants to do is be able to put an advance warning railroad symbol signs on the approach at the intersection of Connors Drive and Mirror Lake Boulevard. And the idea is that traffic right now, if they are turning either left, going westbound, or right, coming south and turning westbound, at that intersection of Connors Drive, could be stopped at the railroad and not realize it, and then have to turn around and come back, double back. What this signal will do is connect to the railroad mast arm. So, when it goes down, it energizes the advance warning signal and lets people know that if they turn right, the railroad is going to be impeding their path, they may choose to go around a different way. So, because the work is being done in the city, it requires intervention or assistance from the county, what the city would, what the agreement will do is allow for the county to actually manage the project, bid out the project, and administer it on behalf of the city, with the city reimbursing the county for the expense. There is a component also of this project that the city will have to enter into an agreement directly with the railroad for the portion of the work that they have to do. So, it's a two-part project, all city responsibility. When the project is completed, then the city continues to be responsible for its operation. However, because of the expertise that the county has in traffic operations, they will rely on us to perform and monitor repairs or monitor the operation. But any expenses incurred by the county in doing so will be reimbursable by the city.
Any questions? Commissioner Agaydo?
Yes, ma'am. Thank goodness. This has been going on for two, three years, I know, but I've been in conversation. I want to commend, you know, the city or whoever got this done, the local legislators. I know I talked with Senator Dugan, and I know others have talked with the other legislators. It's hard to deal with railroads.
Yes, it is.
They're monopoly, so they, you know, they're, but anyway. But this is a long time coming, and I'm just very thankful for it. I know the people of Mirror Lake are going to be very thankful to it. And also, I just want to interject this. The red lights at Mann Road and Highway 78 are working. They, we now have a red light there. We had wrecks there every other day, but finally, the DOT installed the lights, and I'm thankful for that. But, and while I've got him at the podium, can I ask just one quick question about the truck lanes on Thornton Road? I was down on Thornton Road the other day, and it was just a sea of trucks because of the hub, the piggyback hub down there in Astell. Are they going to, when are they going to do the truck lane on Thornton Road? Does anybody know?
I'm sorry, ma'am chair, I'm having trouble finding that item on the agenda as well.
I like to surprise people.
But having said that, there is additional work that's being done for traffic flow along Thornton Road. There was a study that was commissioned probably four years ago now, and there is a project that is being designed by the Georgia DFT to assist with the trucking situation in Thornton Road.
I mean, it was, it looked like a parking lot for trucks down there. It was awful. And I can't imagine what it's going to be like in the port down at Savannah, just opened up more, so, and I yield back.
Any other comments or questions for Director Valencini?
Thank you. Great job. We're real excited about the railroad crossing that has been. Yes. All right. Any other comments from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, real quick, two quick things. We've got two committee meetings that'll be coming up, in which our chair, one is going to be the finance, and we've got one agenda item that we're going to talk about, Jennifer? We've got to cover?
Several, 15 items.
All right?
Yes.
You want to name a couple of them, just for the highlight? And one in particular, I think, is important. Go ahead.
You talking about the one, two weeks from today?
Yes.
Yes, we'll be having one talk about, help me remember, Michelle, it's on the agenda, county property, the audit, the update on the tax abatement project.
Those are the key ones.
Okay.
No, that's good. And one I wanted to highlight was the property. One of the things, my fellow Commissioner Mitchell did a great job of being instrumental in helping facilitate the sale of our jail, that I've always said, you know, let's scout the business and so forth, but we finally did it. We're, transaction's done. But we have other assets that the county own that I know that we pick up assets from time to time, right? Some of them could be left over from other transactions, and some of them, there's things like, we just happen to pick up that we actually own. So, the question becomes, like, well, let's do an inventory of our assets. Should we hold them, fold them, sell them, swap them, whatever the case may be? But I think that, again, one more time, I'm always hearing about the spend, right? Like, okay, guys, there's got to be other ways to look at managing a government, right? So, again, as part of our long-term capital planning process, we're beginning to look at all of our assets and bring back to the Board of Commissioners, and they may not do nothing. I mean, I think it's matter, but we have to inventory what we have and really look at it. It's not that we never had a list, we've had a list, but the question is, we never have gotten to a place where, should we be disposing of assets that we really don't have? I mean, guys, we're not in the real estate business, we're not McDonald. Why do we have these assets that are sitting here? Maybe we can save them, put them in our little fund, or whatever the case may be. So, that's one of the things we're going to take up as a finance committee, and so stay tuned for that. You're welcome to come attend that. The next one is the Transportation Committee, and I'll just, I think the key item that I think I mentioned is that we want to make sure we cover the budget regarding buses. I think I mentioned is that we want to make sure we cover the budget regarding buses. We don't, we recognize there's an pending ARC decision. We're going to dig a little bit deeper into sort of what the budget was submitted for the application. Also, Jennifer, we talked about making sure that we had an analysis from using our new tool on what the budget impact would be on our general funds. So we're going to get a little bit deeper into the numbers regarding that. We welcome anybody out, participate to that. That is not a public input meeting on that day, but you're well the welcome to come and observe. And so I'll just leave it at that. I just want to give people a heads up in these committees and do a better job of letting people know what we're, what we're working on. It's not a shadow of government. We're not Secret Service. We, we really want to do well. And so we welcome you guys to come out and participate and if not, read the meeting minutes or look at the video. I yield.
Any other comments from, from the board of commissioners? Okay, this time.
Madam Chair, can I, one more while we're in the open session. I had a little bit of concern about the tax refund because I remembered in my mind it was a three-year statute limitation refund that earlier Benny said. I want y'all to know it is three years. I looked at the statute. They have one year on certain taxes, three year on property taxes request refund from erroneous or overpayment that was made. And so three has been what we've told you all along and y'all have applied that to other situations where they were beyond three years and they requested refunds and y'all only gave them for the three years. So I wanted to make, I even called Bob Coons during the break, or during my break, to make sure, and I think essentially it was sent up here because they felt like it was a good thing to do, but it, it is going to create for you a difference of how you treated others in the past, other administrations have treated others, and it will set a precedent going forward, which I would caution y'all about.
Okay. Commissioner Geiger?
If I recall, we've done this in the past. We have gone back more than the three years. The law states that to NOD somebody, in other words, it's our error, we left them off the diet. Yes, we can go back seven years, but when we do an error in the office and we overtax them, we can only go back three years. There's always been an argument, it's not fair. But I, I think I recall several instances where we went back more than three years.
Y'all haven't, if I've been sitting here, I don't know if anybody else has sat here. I'll read you forty-eight, five, three, eighty.
I know it says three years, but I'm, I'm just saying.
Any taxpayer from whom taxes or license fee was collected who alleges that such tax or license fee was collected illegally or erroneously may file a claim for a refund within, with the governing authority of the county or municipality at any time within one year or in the case of taxes, three years from the date of payment of taxes or license fee to the county or municipality. So there's a three-year statute on it.
Well, the only problem is that this, the, they didn't catch it. The assessors didn't catch it till recently.
And neither did the payer.
And it's their error.
And neither did the payer as well. There's some responsibility on the taxpayers. That's why you have a Taxpayers Bill of Rights as to how to protect yourself when there is an error. So what they've done by this statute is the legislature's come up with the Balancing Act. We'll give you three years if we're wrong, but we're not going to go back indefinitely because of budgets. I mean, this, this could have more impact than just this one entity if it were taken to its full extent. But I believe as your counsel that the statute is three years from the payment on property taxes, and I've said that before. Now, if there's some deviation from that, I'm not aware of it. And I think the board of assessors are aware of it too because I asked Bob, Bob, do you think we have authority? Well, you are the board of commissioners, but I don't think you did. I think it was just sent up here because they felt emotional empathy for the quester and I get that. I'm not, not getting that, but the law is three years.
Well, we definitely want to follow the law, the level of the law. So maybe we need to look at it, again, revise something.
Madam Chair, I mean, y'all can do whatever you're going to do. Your lawyer's advice is to give them three years tax credit if you decide that you're going to refund or whatever it is.
Agree.
If you're going to go that far, if you're going to go beyond that, I think you may be exceeding the bounds. Now, I did the research in five minutes, but I've read from statute.
You know, I love research. Let's stay with the, with the law.
You know, we're glad to further see if there's any other examples from the Attorney General. I also know you couldn't go back seven years because the time for filing suit is five years or less if they were sued through appeal process because that statute further down talks about no matter what, you can't sue more than five years out if you went through an appellate process.
Well, let's stay within the level of the law. Just three years. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Robinson?
I'm, I'm listening to the conversation and again, I, it's duly noted what counsel said, but again, I'm sort of like, yeah, I think you're right. For some reason, I think, I mean, again, we go back, at least back to 2010. And again, sometimes it's that nod, it's that phone call, it's that what gets itself. But sometimes things just feel, you know, the law wasn't applied at that moment, but now we're, again, we're, we're applying the law. And it's, that's what I'm like, well, I'd still like to know, have we ever done that? So how can we find out the real answer is that have we ever given a, I mean, it shouldn't be that many, so it shouldn't be a hard file to go find, but I, I mean, Madam Geiger and I, I knew it, I'm just asking if the board wishes to know the truth, have we ever done it a different way? I hear that we're, it's being suggested going forward, but I'm just curious that we ever set a precedent already that it already exists.
I think Lisa, Lisa, in your computer, if you were to do a search in the minutes, could you find tax credit, tax appeals? Because you could easily go back and do that if your computer reveals it that way as an index.
Yes, okay.
We can check it over the next twenty-four hours if you, y'all.
Yeah, just something simple. I mean, I'm not asking you to, yeah, you know what I'm saying. Madam Chair, that's your pleasure?
That's fine. We'll just look at it, but of course, I love the level of the law.
Ken, I'd appreciate if you'd read that statute again because what I heard was you
couldn't file outside of three years. It didn't say anything about making the payment of refund. Would you read it again?
I will.
I may have misheard it.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I also have not read the annotations and I'll be glad to find those between now and tomorrow. I'm reading only a portion of forty-eight, five, three, eight. It says, any taxpayer, I might make it big, I'm sorry. Any taxpayer from whom a tax or license fee was collected who alleges that such tax or license fee was collected illegally or erroneously may file a claim for refund within the governing authority of the county or municipality any time within one year or in the case of taxes, three years after the date of payment of the taxes or license fee for the county or municipality. Now, what that means is if you pay taxes four years ago, you can't file it now for refund on something you paid four years ago. So it is a statutory limitation, a bar to an action, three years from the time of payment. That's why they tied it to the date of payment.
It's, it's difficult to reach in my mind filing within three years, but the filing could go back four or five years. Filing is within three years.
Well, I'll give you an example. Let's, let's say this. Let's say that the error occurred five years ago. Under this statute, if you pay taxes five years ago, you could not file because you have to file three years from the date of payment. I didn't write the law, I'm just reading it. My interpretation is a three-year bar. But we'll, listen, I get it. I'll dig deep to see if there's any Attorney General's opinion or anything that authorizes outside of that. I'm glad to.
It just seemed like a limitation on the filing time, time period, not how far you can go back.
Well, it's like if you get in a car accident, you got two years from the date of accident to file, you can't file three years. It's a bar.
That's it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board of commissioners? At this time, county attorney, we need to go into executive session.
And, and, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure y'all knew, that applied to illegal taxes and erroneous taxes. So that covers errors, just so y'all know.